Okay, we'll call our meeting to order. Would everyone please stand, face the flag, and join us as we say the place of allegiance?
............................................................ Thank you for being here. It's a special meeting with the intent of moving forward on our superintendent hire. We've only got two things on our agenda this evening. First one being the consideration of the cost, the level of service, and then our main part of our meeting which deals with the process of hiring. So I would look for a motion from someone to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve the motion.
Katie on the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie. No scheduled presenters. Public input. Thank you for coming this evening. We're gonna have a unified front in dealing with this. We intend to make as many people a part of the process as can, but ultimately it lands in our lap as board. So, does anyone have anything for the district on the public input section? Anything that they'd like to speak to? We're closed on that. Action items. Under new business, consideration to approve the cost and level of service from the MSBA. We got this handout some time ago about the process, about the costs involved with the process. It runs anywhere from $1,000 up to $7,000, depending on the level of service that we want or need. At our previous meeting, we decided that we would retain our MSBA to be our leaders in this process. Some of you with a history know that, which includes me, that we've had four different processes for our superintendent, this being the fourth. So, this is the process that today is the most desirable and the one that we were encouraged to use. So that's the direction we'll go. So, I'd like to open some discussion on the level of service that we feel we need as a board here. I'll throw it out first. I'm in favor of the full superintendent search. I know it's our most expensive option, but we've done some advanced work knowing that for $60,000, $100,000, that's our best bang for the buck when we've inquired as to other services and the cost of other services. So, on a personal level, I feel good with that. And I'm just looking for input from others, I guess.
Well, I would concur. I think we spoke last meeting of just initially using MSBA, and then, I think Katie, was you questioning what the true cost was, and so that was laid out here for us. And I think there was some discussion around the level of commitment from the MSBA and what we're getting in comparison to using outside source. And that this is really quite beneficial for the expense.
So, I guess my question, and it could be directed towards you, is what the major difference is between the limited superintendent search and the full superintendent search? Because I'm just not, from this sheet, I see limited search is listed in the bottom one and not in the second to bottom one. And I'm not sure what that all entails or what the differences are between those two tiers, because the way I look at it is if we can save the $2,600, that could save us a program or something down the line if we're having to look at budget cuts or something like that. So, I guess that's my whole thing is where the difference is between, I agree, we need one of these top two to do this, but I'm curious what the difference is.
Yes. In your, yes, on the table, there's like an inverted German, and that will kind of give you the breakdown of the limited. So, that would include the facilitative planning meeting, which basically we're gonna do tonight, advertising the vacancy, receive the applications and manage the applications. MSBA do that for you. Conduct in-house review of applications, initial verification, et cetera. Facilitate school board candidate selection meetings. So, you select your finalists, scheduling the interviews, and then assisting with preparing interview questions and scheduling the interviews. We would not do any interview training or be onsite at all for the actual interviews, whereas with the full search, we conduct interview training, develop the curriculum around interview questions and schedules advertised, vacancy, other options, maybe facilitate stakeholder-related activities. So, if you wanted to have this online survey, one-on-one interviews and community engagement, that would only be with the full service. That would not be with the limited service. And then also being onsite for the first and second round of interviews and then working to develop the news releases to the public regarding the process of the search.
Okay. What's the difference of the advertise, advertising the vacancy, the expanded options, the additional options? I mean, would there be more options on the advertising?
If you wanted to, so we'll do the Minnesota School Boards Association website, also on the AppleTrack system that we use, the MASA website, EdPost, North Dakota has a consortium very similar to EdPost, and then South Dakota also has one. If you wanted to go above and beyond and do, like in the Pioneer Press or start to do things like that, that would be additional costs beyond both of those.
Anybody have any other questions? If not, I would look for a motion to approve something.
I'll make a motion for the full superintendent search.
Kate, Bill has made a motion to use the full superintendent search. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? A second? I will second it. I believe I can. So, motion by Bill, seconded by Bob, to accept the full service. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
No, I want to have some more discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, how important is it to us that the MSBA people be onsite for our interviews or that we have this interview training?
I was gonna ask that question too. I mean, what, from your perspective, what benefit does that provide us to have MSBA onsite during the interview process?
We can help facilitate the, moving people around for you and answering questions if they have questions. So, it frees up yourself so that you're not involved with having to try to move people around. So, if you have multiple people going at one site at one time, we can help facilitate getting people from point A to point B. And then also with the interview question, helping you create interview questions that align with your hiring criteria, and then making sure that everyone's on the same page as for consistency of information regarding those interview questions.
Would you still do that with the limited search to create the interview questions?
We'll just do the initial.
The first round.
First round.
Okay.
One of the other things that I would add is that often on the night of an interview, someone has a question, one of you has a question, what about this, what about that? Can we ask the candidate this? Something all of a sudden comes up. One of the things that's happening within these searches is there's getting to be more and more legal requirements and things you can do and can't do. We've had some experience at that, you know, plenty of experience at it. And so, if you happen to, you know, stray into the wrong question or do something, and we often find that the night of the interview, there are things going on, or someone comes late, how do we handle this? It allows you, the board members, to focus on one thing, and that's to evaluate the candidates and not have to think about, gee, I wonder if this is okay or that's okay. We'll be here to tell you if you can or can't do something, or can or can't ask something or say something. So, it just seems like during the night of the interview, something usually comes up, and we make sure that, you know, we're on track with all those kinds of things.
Do you actually sit in on the interview or just there?
We're in the audience.
In the audience.
Taking notes. Then afterwards, as you go to, you know, consider the candidates, you might ask us, what did that answer mean? You know, do you think that's important? And we might come back with, yeah, we often see people giving that kind of an answer or, you know, here's one thing you want to remember when someone gives that answer.
And so, in addition to the difference between the full and the limited is the community engagement. So, if you wanted to have Q and A as part of the second round of interviews, we will help facilitate and moderate the Q and A with the public and the candidates.
Other questions? We have a motion on the floor in a second to use the full superintendent search. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of using the full superintendent search, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that passes by a four to one measure. Item two is the MSBA initial planning of the superintendent search agenda item. We have two people from MSBA here. I would like them to introduce themselves and maybe just a brief background, and we'll jump in.
All right. I'm Amy Taylor. I'm with Minnesota School Boards Association. I'm in my 13th year, and prior to joining MSBA, I was in the private sector and did community resources for a variety of different companies. And we're from manufacturing to wireless to Revote Casino.
My name is Bruce Klein. I'm a retired superintendent of 19 years. I was also a principal for nine years, and am now doing some consulting, both for Southeast Service Cooperative and for the sort of School Boards Association. All my 19 years as superintendent were down here in the southeast corner, so pretty familiar with the folks in the schools around this area.
Okay, thank you. You'll be leading in this, so would you like to jump in and begin?
I'll jump in. All right. So, we're gonna go to finding the right superintendent booklet. And if you turn to the very first page, so we'll walk through part of this, and then there's some other forms that are in a blue folder. We'll kind of be switching back and forth between those two things. The first one at the very bottom is talking about the do's and don'ts of hiring a superintendent. The first things are, do determine the school district's needs first, do arrive, agree to arrive at consensus, take enough time to conduct the search, and make certain all board members are up during the process. And some of the don'ts are, don't hire the best of the worst, don't overlook those already in the district, don't let a consultant identify the best superintendent for the school district, and don't give away the school board's right to select a superintendent. And we'll talk a little bit more about those as we go through the process. And if you have questions, feel free to ask along this way.
May I just throw something out here? We invited department heads, EA representatives, and being that our board is not overly experienced so far, we'll learn a lot by the time this process is over. I felt it incumbent that we invite folks here, and I don't want to sit here for two hours and then just say what just became of this meeting and why weren't we involved. Could you at least speak to that a little bit for us?
Yeah. So, tonight is kind of laying the groundwork and getting a lot of confirmation on the timeline and those types of things. There will be an opportunity to provide some feedback, but then going forward, once that timeline is finalized, there will be some more engagement of stakeholder opportunities with the online survey and open forums, asking questions, et cetera, and that will take place in February. So, there will be an opportunity for involvement.
And we're actually gonna, some of the department heads and leaders, we will interview one-on-one. So, you will have a chance to sit down with a member of our staff, and we have a set of questions, we will ask each of you the same questions, and plus get any comments or input that you want to provide. So, this is an important part of it to get your feedback. And then, like I said to a couple people, if you leave here tonight, tonight is a lot of work for the board, but if you leave here tonight thinking, well, I didn't really get to say all that I wanted to say, those opportunities are coming up, rest assured.
Thank you.
All right. So, if you want to turn to page one of the booklet. You're in the beginning of the search, but you're kind of already further down the path that you've already selected a consultant to work with. And so, I'm looking under the budget. Things to keep in mind would be the application or applicant expenses if you are going to pay anything, and these are things just to start thinking about going forward. And when you bring people in for interviews, if you want to pay anything regarding the travel, and then if you choose to do site visits for your lone finalist, any costs that would be associated with your travel going to those other schools. Then looking on page two is a timeline. As you can see, it says one to six months. We greatly condensed that down. So, in your packets, there should be a revised timeline, I believe. Somebody might have discussed a little bit with you last week. If this one's in your packet. There wasn't, there's an extra copy of the document there. So, tonight you took action. Tonight, we're gonna be working on setting the timeline, starting to develop the hiring criteria, the search process, stakeholder involvement, et cetera. And then ideally, we would like to open the online survey on the 24th and have that open through February 7th. And then on the 28th, which is next Monday, that is where the board will be taking action to approve a lot of the things that we talked about tonight, such as the hiring criteria, salary information, the brochure, those types of things. And then the week on February 11th through the 15th, that is when Bruce talked about facilitating the community listening sessions and the one-on-one interviews. We're proposing that that take place at that time. And then the February 19th meeting, that's when the interview training and development interview questions for the first round will take place. And then the 25th will be the deadline. So, all applications will be due at midnight or 11:59 on the 25th. And then on the 26th, MSBA consultants will look at the hiring criteria that you've established, and then the pool of applicants that have come in, who's actually completed and submitted full applications, and then go through that and do some preliminary screening. And then on the 4th of March, the board would have the opportunity to determine who they'd like to interview. And so, depending on how many applicants actually apply, will determine how many interviews that you want to offer. And then March 7th to the 9th, you do your first round of interviews. And then March 13th, you'd be conducting your reference checks and hold your second round of interviews. And after the second round of interviews, you would select your lone finalist and decide that you'd do a site visit. And then the 15th to the 22nd, negotiate the employment contract. The 25th, approve the employment contract. And July 1st is when the superintendent would start. So, that's kind of the timeline that's been laid out. Any questions or?
Feedback on that? How does that look to you?
Concise. Developing hiring criteria is on this evening's agenda.
Yes, it is.
Can you expand on that just a little bit? Or is that something to be dealt with a little bit later?
So, there's a list of about 21 different items. We'll have the board and then...
We'll hand those out. You don't have them.
You don't have those yet. The board actually hasn't.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay. Right.
So, we'll walk through that, and then as you talked about, you're wanting participation. So, I do have copies for those that are in the audience. If you'd like to have them, complete those also. We can collect those, and then we can look and see, this is what the board said, this is what the audience said, and see where things lie. A lot of times, they're very close together as to what are the preferred hiring criteria. And ideally, if we could walk away with four to six items that you would think would be your ideal, things that you'd like to see in your next superintendent, then we can add those to the brochure, then bring to you for your next meeting, number 28.
We can just say all of the above, but...
You can't say all of them. There's not room. Other questions or comments?
As far as the process is concerned, it's essentially, the deadline is February 25th. How do you feel, based on your past experience, six weeks?
Six weeks? We've seen them as short as four weeks. So, six weeks is a very reasonable period of time to post that vacancy.
For people who might want to know where we are on the curve, there's always lots of openings. Are we ahead of the game just a little bit?
I would say you're kind of like in the front half of the mix of things. So, you're in that kind of all say first wave of postings. And then once those positions have been finalized, then depending on if they're current superintendents, there may be some round two then for those openings coming through.
Okay.
So, that was a good segue. We're actually gonna go to number three, page three. And talked a little bit about stakeholder involvement, and in your packet is a survey in the blue folder. And if you would like to take a couple minutes just to kind of look that over, we are proposing that, to put this online, so on the 24th, to have it open to the public for anyone who'd like to fill it out. And then that would be open until February 7th. And then the summary of information, once that's done, will be sent back or presented to the board for your information also to help you through the process. So, again, very similar to information that we're gonna be collecting today, is looking for those areas of expertise, specialized skills, and then also personal characteristics. And then there is a text box for some comments also. If something was missing that you felt was very important, they could also ask that into the open form text box.
Is this something that could be like a link sent to all the parents?
Yes.
Like via email or something, so that it just makes it easier?
Yep.
You get more responses?
Yep. So, we will have, there'll be hard copies available, so if someone wanted a hard copy. And then we will also send a link to the district, so you could post it on your website or you could forward it into an email, however you decide that you want to get that information out. Yes.
So, this also includes business owners and just community members. How would we reach those individuals who have them likely? Is it just the website, the newspaper?
And we can help craft PSA announcements with your local media, so we can get information out that way. If you have a local radio station, we can send out information to local radio stations and to the paper.
I mean, the newspaper? I'm just trying to think of how much time we're gonna actually have in the newspaper, so. The 24th? I'm figuring we have to edit it here.
It's Monday.
So, we're posting on the 24th of January.
It's Thursday.
That's the day, well, basically, the book is out that day.
Yeah, it would help us to know when are the newspaper days.
So, when would it actually hit the paper? It probably wouldn't hit the paper till the 31st.
It would be, for a better... It needs to be, information needs to be doled out to the paper by noon on Tuesday or...
By Monday, the 20th. So, we would have that first newspaper. It's going through the 7th, which is the second newspaper print.
It's every two weeks?
Every week.
It's every week.
Oh.
But we're missing the first one.
Oh, okay.
Because the 24th is already in print.
Okay.
So, that we have the 31st and then the 7th.
Okay.
So, do you?
Well, I'm just wondering...
It only gives it one week.
Are you wanting to extend the deadline? Is that what you're wanting?
For the survey.
For the survey?
Maybe through the weekend?
So, it falls on the...
Does that?
Does that mess up everything?
Yeah.
That should be okay. We can adjust it.
So, adjust that to?
Good idea.
To the 10th.
Good observation.
So, like I said, we'll do, we can work on PSA announcements for the radio, do announcements for the paper. Monday is the deadline, so we'll make sure that we get it in before, on the 28th. And then we'll adjust the timeline to close on the 10th versus the 7th. And then we'll also have hard copies available at the district office if somebody would like to request a hard copy. Hopefully, the live link and on your website, and then if you want to send it out via whatever communication. Then the next thing is looking at the calendar for those community staff in district sessions that take place. We said the 11th through the 15th. If we could narrow down to one to two days, districts have chosen sometimes to do one day with two of us in the district, and that way, one can go one way and one can go the other. Other districts have chosen to do two days with one person. So, we could do the 11th with two people, the 12th, the 13th, the 14th, or the 15th. Just trying to figure out what would work best for your district to make sure that we're having opportunities for staff and community to have opportunities to come to those listening sessions. This is, so this is the group listening sessions where we can do a before-morning school session, after-school session for staff, and we can do a coffee session in the community, we can be in the library, whatever's most convenient for the community and the staff. We can adjust our schedules to fit those needs. So, that would be something that we would need you to help massage, which day or days were best for you and what times you would like us to do. And that's something that doesn't have to be decided today. That can be mulled over, and then the decision can be made on the 28th at the next meeting. So, then that way, you can have an opportunity to have feedback from the staff regarding which day, because there might be a book fair or something going on in the school that you don't want to run against trying to compete to have people come to those opportunities.
Valentine's Day in there.
Oh, yes.
What would typically occur when you're facilitating and doing the community listening? Can you give maybe an example of what might happen?
Yep. So, we have five questions that we ask everyone, so that we're essentially asking the same question of every group. So, we want to know what's good going on in the Cannon Falls area school, what challenges might be happening in the next year to three years, what qualities or characteristics that you would think the next successful superintendent should possess? What do you think the superintendent needs to know about the history regarding the district and the community? And if there's one thing that you could say to the next superintendent, what would it be? So, having those opportunities to provide feedback regarding those questions.
And somewhere in there is the opportunity to say what is being asked.
Yes. So, we can do sessions with community, staff, and students, because sometimes districts will have members of their student population involved also. So, that's something to take into consideration.
That's kind of left to you folks and maybe what the principals are as to how extensive we want to include and how broad you want it to be, keeping in mind that scheduling and, you know, how many people would you want to have input if you have a couple people who would be good representatives of a group or something? We kind of leave that to you to determine who you want to have involved. And if you fail the gym, that's a pretty tough interview.
Once more, if anybody has any questions with the audience, you will certainly respond and answer those. So, if you do have any questions, let us know. Answer those. So if you have any questions, let us know. Okay, anybody got any questions so far? Where do we go?
And when I alluded to the Q and A piece, another opportunity for community involvement or audience participation is during the second round of interviews, having people complete an audience input form. Again, looking at where are two strengths, the top two strengths of the individuals, and then what would be two opportunities for the role. Providing that feedback to the board would be available with the second round of interviews. Another opportunity. So with, there's no other questions, we'll kind of get into the search qualifications survey for the superintendent. And as I talked about in the board packet, you have white copy. And then, we'll pass out a copy also to everyone in the audience. What we're looking for is that what you think are the top six items that you feel are the most important. And as Brenda alluded to, she wants all of them, but we can't have all of them. You have to pick six. And then, on the very bottom there is a separate question. So you'll have six, plus you'll answer this bottom one as a yes or no regarding their previous experience as a superintendent. So if you just want to take the next few moments and work it through the worksheet.
I actually have a quick question on the timeline. The stakeholder survey is open through the 10th. But we're determining and approving hiring criteria next week without having feedback from that survey. Is that how it's supposed to work? I mean, that feels like we're asking for input, but we're not going to actually use it.
So what some boards do is they, we use it upfront. Other boards will use it to help them craft the interview question. Because typically, the response is very close to what the board has decided as their hiring criteria. We haven't seen too many that are completely different from each other.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess with that question, staff and the department heads, at what place are they directly going to do this? That's where I was trying to understand.
Okay, so if you actually want to change and not do your hiring criteria, you'll have to change possibly the depth, the... So my initial understanding was that you were going to make the decision tonight regarding your preliminary hiring criteria. And so that's what the timeline was based off, but it can be changed. So then, we would look at either changing the application deadline if you wanted to incorporate time to include everything in actually finalizing to see how those feedback responses align with what you're deciding today. Or you can use it as more as through the interview process to help craft those interview questions.
I'm sorry, I was handing out the thing, but this is in regard to the leadership profile piece on the... And so, we're just trying to kind of get an initial thing to put in the brochure. But official input is still in the very much part of the process. But this is kind of preliminary, so that we can complete the brochure.
And I think that clarifies it a little bit for myself. So then, you know, we're putting together an idea. We're going to get staff input, community input, and hopefully, they're sort of aligned.
When you feel you've completed it, fold it in half. Then I'll know that you're done, and I'll pick it up.
All right, so is the board all done? Everyone's done with their...
Yeah, all of them.
Okay. So in your packets is a draft start of a brochure, an advertising brochure. And this is the starting point. And so graphics can be changed, et cetera, if you like. So right now, on the very front, it's just basically saying that the application deadline is the 25th. And then, if you open it up, it talks about the search, the school district, points of pride, education program facility highlights about the community. And then, leadership profile will go in here. And then, whether or not superintendent services preferred required. And then, your board. And then, on the backside, it talks about the timeline, salary contract, financial highlights, screen, and application procedure. Opening up, looking at the school district points of pride. And I know this is your first time seeing this. This is your opportunity, this is your time to shine and let everyone know how great you are. You have a lot of great things going on in your school. So you want to make sure that you're conveying that information out to all the potential applicants out there. So you want to make sure that we haven't missed something. If there's something that you feel is important and that's not listed, we can move things around and add things. So. Look at those areas. So again, you're not having to make a final decision on this tonight, it's more the starting point to start looking at that. See if there's things missing that you'd like to have added, or if things moved, et cetera. So kind of tying to this, one thing that we will need to know from you, the board, is who would you like to be the point of contact? So if there's questions regarding the brochure or regarding something regarding the search, is it someone maybe on the board, or is it someone on staff that you would like to be the point of contact to have information go through? So for example, if for the brochure, the goal would be to approve this on Monday. So if you had questions or comments that you would like it all to go to, so me, let's say I happen to be on your board or on your staff, and you say Amy's going to be the point of contact. So get all information to her by Friday, so that she can then send everything off to MSBA at once regarding the brochure. Or if there's a question regarding who do we need to get the link to for the survey? Or who do we need to get to point of contact for your district newspaper, or radio, or things like that? Who would have that person as the go-to person?
Do you want a response to that?
I would.
I think, I think our HR person, Lori, would be the best bet for us. She would be a clearinghouse, if you will. She raised her hand, so she's, she's our person.
Okay, cool. All right. So we will have Lori as be the point of contact. And then, that way, she'll know who then she needs to reach out to get the information to if something would come up. Okay, great. And then, along those lines, also newspaper. So it sounds like it's a weekly paper, and Mondays are our deadline to get things in. So circling back around to this, so if you do have comments, suggestions regarding the brochure, please get those to Lori on Friday, by Friday. And then, we can get any updates that need to be done and incorporated for your next meeting on the 28th. I have one more copy. You got one? Okay. Bruce is busy tabulating the results of the qualification survey for us. So on the brochure, we talked about your points of pride. So, quick discussion, and I shouldn't say quick, but a discussion about what do you think are challenges or concerns that a new superintendent may need to address coming within the next year to three years in your school? And this is just helping us to get a understanding better if we have questions like, is it increasing enrollment, declining enrollment, budgeting, those types of things that we can address with?
Declining enrollment in the elementary school, just from, we're just experiencing a dip.
Anything for us?
I'd like to get some input, if you have any.
Mr. Hodges?
Yeah, things to go, like for each graduating class, it's kind of...
It says involving stakeholders, please feel free.
What are we talking about, challenges?
Challenges.
I think our budget, we wanted to increase our fund balance.
I think retaining and recruiting features with proper salaries.
Just to clarify that, so do you mean the maintenance and...
Right.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to flip gears now. So you've seen the brochure, but what other great things are going on in your district that you want to highlight as positive things, strengths for your district?
Sorry.
I think we have good community involvement. I know that we talked about that. Speech to the information, but I know that businesses and community are very involved in the school.
With budgeting, even with budget issues, they've been able to be innovative with programming, programming others.
Teaching staff, these phenomenal.
The community really comes together to overcome any, any obstacles, like a program being eliminated or something we come up with. The community comes together, and the parents are really involved with helping to keep things going for the kids.
I think, you know, academically, we tend to, because scores are above the state average and the preparing and so on. Doing really well academically.
There are lots of opportunities for students to participate in life, whether it be athletics, activities, you know, extraordinary kind of things, school career development. Lots of other opportunities.
We also have state champions in speech, correct? Correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, so speech should be added in there. We have a very successful speech program.
I think it should also be noted that we do a lot of this work. So we run LEM, and we do a very good job of making sure that all of our programming, whatever it is, or the faculty, or whatever, all the way down to the institute service. We all run very well. We still put out a little bit of that.
We have very good extracurriculars at the elementary level as well. Lots of options for robotics and things that they can carry on into their middle school and high school years. Get started early.
We have great facilities here.
I know, I saw it. I was like, wow.
We have facilities to brag about. And again, that piggybacks on our community, who has supported us several times in that endeavor, so. For our size, there's very few that are better, indoor and outdoor. It's a hard time for some of these people to speak themselves. We have such great leadership in our departments, as well as our EA, our staff. And it makes our job just quite a bit easier, because we've got a, we've got a real unity in our community and in our school. Again, our department heads from our bookkeeping, accounting, to just facilities, food service, to our athletic department.
Is that what that, on that blue sheet, there was something about leadership teams? Would you say that's kind of getting at what Bob just mentioned? Or is that a whole different topic?
Yeah, develop and direct an effective leadership team?
Is that kind of what he's saying?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and, you know, to develop and direct, um, it's one thing to have a lot of good people, but there's also a skill in bringing good people together and getting them to work as a team. Because a lot of good people can also want to go in different directions. And so, yeah, that's, I would say that's exactly what you've got there, yeah.
Anything else? That's a good thing.
Just about there.
Bruce is just about done.
Final. Interesting.
All right, so I'll read the board first, and then I'll read the audience's second. So, the top six were act of honesty and ethical manner in dealing with school board, staff, and community. Be a people person with proven abilities in human relations and communications. Be visible in the school district and assessable to the school board, staff, students, parents, and community. Delegate authority while maintaining accountability. Develop and direct an effective leadership team. And then promote business and community involvement. And four felt that previous superintendent's experience was important. So...
Did you get all them?
One, three, four, five, six, seven, nineteen.
One, three, four, five, six, seven, and nineteen. And I can give you, leave it back if you, uh, have a copy.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so then, number one, it was also selected act of honesty and ethical manner. So, both thought that was important. Both thought develop and direct an effective leadership team was important. Both felt be a people person with proven abilities in human relations and communications was important. And then, we have effectively mediate and accommodate different perspectives, value collaboration. Follow the educational philosophy established by the school board, which reflects the values of the community. Have a thorough knowledge of and successful experience in the school district management practices. Have a thorough, thorough knowledge of and successful experience in school finance. And working properly with the school board, provide options and recommendations. And it was kind of flipped where majority said previous superintendent experience is not preferred, is a no. So, with that...
Strong majority, yeah.
Just to recap, there's at least three or four that are continuum here.
Yep.
Yes, there are.
The three, the act of the honesty, be a people person, and develop and direct an effective leadership team, both sides. Said that that was important. And then, there... Eight was selected as, number eleven and twelve, and twenty-one were the next highest ones. These are what I'm talking about. Again, maybe the numbers will make a little more sense now, one, three, and seven consensus. And then the board had five, six, and nineteen. And then the top three, were eleven, twelve, and twenty-one. Those came in at six and seven. And then, um, there was a tie for five on eight and nine, those came in lower.
This will help us a lot, putting that brochure together.
Based in your experience, is this fairly typical of a community when you see these things? Some consensus, a lot of consensus on that?
I'd say there's typically a lot of consensus, which, um, the things that even are not a hundred percent line, there's still some continuity in those areas, um, so that there can be a blending of the different criteria together to hopefully then balance what the board was saying and what also the feedback of everyone else is saying. So I, I think it's pretty consistent that there's the consistency, uh, consistency, consistency, regarding what the board says and then also what the public says regarding that criteria.
And, and I think I would just add that any, any superintendent should understand that to some degree, the board's priorities will be a little bit different than some staff members. They won't, they won't, you know, coincide all six. But I think it's a good sign that half of them are. So you, you know, you have a, you, you share a common philosophy, but it's normal that some would value certain things more than others. So, it looks right to me.
So then going back to that final question, um, the board was saying that you would prefer someone with prior experience. In what we've seen regarding that question, some boards will be steadfast and say that prior experience is a, it has to be, it's a required, must-have previous experience. Other boards will fall on a preferred. And so then that allows you to cast a wider net with individuals. For example, I may be assistant superintendent somewhere or, um, and not have that quote title of superintendent, but I may fit your leadership profile and I may have what you consider would be very close experience that would align that you'd like to see. So if you had a preferred, then that person then could possibly come into the pool versus the must. And so that would be, um, something to take into consideration as to is it going to be a must or a preferred or the prior superintendent experience.
In making a statement, is that a question, or are you looking for?
That would be something that would be, have to be decided tonight or on the 28th. So, you can either, um, discuss it tonight and make a decision. Or if you feel that you would like to have a little time to mull it over, you can then make that decision, um, on the 28th. Because what we will do is, we can put something in, right now it's a holding place, it's previous superintendent experience is preferred or required, and then depending on what the board decides, that would be inserted for your brochure.
Just an interesting perspective to share here in my research and getting ready. If you think of all the schools in the Highway Valley League, all of your conference schools, only one currently has a superintendent who had previous experience. And that surprised me. I was surprised to see that. You would typically think of your size school as like a second step or, or, but every HVL school but one, their current superintendent was a first-time superintendent when they took that position. So it's not out of the realm, and I, and I don't think you necessarily can say that it will suffer. But on the other hand, experience is always nice, so, but just a perspective.
We've had our, our last three soups, one had a, a wealth of experience coming in here, Mr. Maguire. Uh, Mr. Sesker had some experience, but not a lot. And this was Beth's first, first venture, and they've all served our purposes quite well. And, uh, I was like you, I always feel like there's a tiered system. We're, we're step two, maybe step three sometimes along the path. But I was one who voted for, um, experience, but boy, it's just one of those that, uh, you know, we, we've had good experience and there's, uh, a short time ago, there was conversation that the, the pool was dwindling, if you will, of superintendent candidates. I remember, uh, Mr. Maguire probably had sixty, and I would bet Beth would have been half of that amount. What do you see as some of this, um, these first-year superintendents, maybe because, um, there's just, um, not a wealth of them out there? Can you speak to that at all?
I, I think, um, it's, you know, there are, there are, there are a number of factors. But there's no question, in all of education, those of you that are hiring, finding the same thing. There aren't as many people in the field of education as there were, say, twenty-five years ago. Whether it's a teacher, whether it's an administrator, or whether it's a superintendent. So, so right off the bat, it's true, there are, there, there are fewer. And I, I think, um, there, it, it, and I, and again, it's just like it used to be when you were coaching or anything else, you worked your way up. Well, it, it isn't so much that way now, and maybe we do a better job of screening our applicants and saying, you know, this person is ready to take, you know, to take it on. So, um, don't really know that there's any one reason, but I think the numbers are probably as big a reason as any. I don't know any of what you think, but...
Yeah, I'd say it goes back to, um, there are just less people.
Well, I was one of the ones that put, experience, yes, um, but, uh, you know, I don't think we should, I, I think preferred would be more, um, appropriate, just so we don't rule out an excellent candidate just because of the, you know, like you said, maybe they were the assistant to the superintendent. That's a lot of knowledge right there, so, I don't know.
Same as me.
Who knows things, like it's, it preferred, I would prefer it, but I, I'm not, it's not a game, yeah. It's not gonna rule it out for me.
Yeah, I said yes, preferred, but would consider other candidates with administrative experience.
I also marked it as yes for experience, but I understand the preference. But I think going back to these questions in someone that is maybe a principal and having that opportunity, because I think we're all looking for an opportunity at some point in life. But how do you really come to understand what these mean in someone that has not been in the role? So, that would be the challenge when you go that route. And I think that's where we would be leaning on you in the questions and how those come out and how to draw that type of information out of those candidates.
So would you say that's a preferred for you, but not?
Yeah, it would be a preferred, but looking for some help and guidance.
Sure, if you're not gonna get an experienced person, how do we, how do we rectify some of those, uh, things?
Right, because, you know, we do have consensus on some of these things between the community, and we want to make sure we get on them.
I guess I was the only one at the table that didn't think experience was absolutely necessary. Um, it just says previous experience, it doesn't say they were successful at it. That's true. I think, I, I, I agree with what everyone has said about making sure that we are taking from the largest pool possible. And I think the way that the process is set up, looking at what our criteria is, I think we're gonna get, whether they have experience or not, the best candidates for our particular set of needs. Um, but I don't think that previous superintendent experience is absolutely necessary. Hope I'm correct, we prefer. All right. So we will insert that into, um, there. Then what we will do is take and massage these, um, things into your hiring criteria and put those into here. And then a copy will be sent back to Lori, and Lori will get that out for you to look at prior to the January 28th board meeting, to say, yes, that's what we were thinking, or, um, no, that's not what we were thinking. And so...
You think if preferred is in there, that, that chases people?
I don't think so. I think it, um, opens the door for those that are looking for that first opportunity, maybe, that haven't had the title of superintendent, um, but they have all the background in looking for that opportunity. But where if you say it's a required, I've not met the minimum requirement to apply for that job.
I think most candidates know, and having been a candidate, that you know that someone with, you know, who has previous experience may have some of, may have a bit of an edge on you. I mean, that's understood, so I don't think it'll be a negative.
All right, so in your booklet, um, we're on page five. So also, something that you'll need to think about is, on the back of the brochure, it says salary and contract with the lines of page five talking about, um, what should the announcement say regarding salary? We've seen kind of, um, a trend in school boards, uh, selecting to put in a salary range. So then that way, those individuals that are looking know that, uh, that's within what I'm looking for, or not. They may say, you know what, this is my minimum, and what they're willing to pay is not gonna meet those needs, et cetera. So then that helps, um, I didn't attract those individuals that are looking for, um, the hiring criteria that fit your need and then also the salary requirements. So that would be something that you'd want to take in consideration, is looking at how to, um, word that language as to what you'd like to see for a salary range. And in your packets, there is a multi-color sheet, which is information gathered from the Department of Education website.
What we also have for your comparison is, um, the current year, all of the schools in your conference, HVL. Um, and this is probably something that should have strong consideration. And I, they are listed by size of district, so that there's no order in terms of better work or anything else, just by size of district. I'll give to the public. We do have a few more, sorry.
You know, I'm always kind of conflicted on this. Is this a requirement, an encouragement? That you're asking us to, to essentially, uh, look over the parameters of benefits and wages, so we can post them on...
Well, we're, not necessarily benefits, more or less, it's a salary. And so, what a lot of boards have gone to is putting out, um, a minimum or a range, just so that it's out there as to what the salary compensation is, um, so that the individuals that are applying know what kind to expect, that this is the highest that they're gonna go. And I am already making that, I'm looking for the next step or whatever, um, so that they wouldn't, they would have that information to help them decide whether or not they would like to be considered.
We're looking for something to fill this.
Yep.
On your brochure, the salary and contract piece, we're looking to, what, what you want that to say?
And it doesn't have to be tonight, again, it's a consideration. You don't have to put something in if you don't want to, um, but it's... You don't have to put something in if you don't want to, but it's there.
Again, we run the chance of potentially people saying, oh, they're not even posting the salary, I'm not interested, or wouldn't that be a factor? We have to weigh everything that we offer. And there's so many good things about our school and about our community.
I think your range is a good idea.
I will say one thing that in previous experience, that someone may apply thinking, and the salary is not discussed at all, that I was looking for thirty or forty thousand more, or we just can't afford thirty thousand or forty thousand more. And so then, that individual then withdraws from the process, and he or she may be into the final round of interviews at that time. And so, this way, it's upfront, they know exactly what the range is, so if it falls within what they're looking for.
Would, would people go to a site to gather this information if we didn't include it, so we're not really? I mean, this is, this is public information.
We will include this, so basically it would say hypothetically, a salary range of fifty to eighty thousand is what would be posted. This information would not be posted, this is to help you as you're thinking about what that salary range might look like.
Correct, but I guess my question was, is this public information that they, that any superintendent, potential candidate could just go online and say, oh, that's about what they paid?
Yep, the MD website, they have a report that they can go to, and then some districts have the information posted on their website, some, you just have to request the information.
But if you, if you contact the school and ask, they'll have to share that information with you.
My conservative side is coming through. Do you have?
I think it's, I think it's pretty standard to provide a range, I think it is a turnoff if people don't know ahead of time what they can anticipate. I, and I think it, and it says it here too, salary not less than, or salary will not exceed, or if you say what the actual number is, people that think it's too low might not even apply. And then if we end up paying more than that, we might have missed out on potential candidates because they didn't think we were going to pay enough, because we set a top end. But I think if you, if you provide a range, it again helps with the overall pool of candidates. And I think if you look at job postings now, a lot of times, the ones that get the most interest are ones that do include some salary information.
And it would be commensurate on experience, too. Yeah, then the range.
I think if they've got access to it, I'm not in favor, but whatever you folks decide, I'm with.
Well, Bob, I, I think you've been on the negotiations committee multiple times, right? So, the salary is one piece of it. And if you look at a few of these, you know, health is a, is a big part, that's going to be something that's gonna have to be negotiated. And so, creating that range is probably a better tool for us, that you have, they're gonna take it in salary, or are you gonna take it in, I don't care, any?
Yeah.
Something to think about.
You know, we, we always need to move forward, our timeline is tight, I don't think this is a game changer for anyone, including me. If you wanna put in a range, that, that's fine with us.
What is that range?
That's your decision.
Question one answered, question two still to be answered.
What would you think?
Probably one twenty-five on the bottom, looking at the other schools. Or we have to consider what we can afford, but.
Now, keep in mind, the numbers here are eighteen, nineteen, you'll be hiring something for, someone for nineteen, twenty, just, just clarifying.
If you look at the salary, I mean, insurance, it's like one thirty-six, really.
That's also with eight years of experience.
With experience.
You know, so, take for example the, the Zambroda.
Yeah, the real salary is one twenty-five, but how much experience do they have? Oh, six.
Would you like to include a number this week? Would you wanna wait till the upcoming meeting?
And you don't have to take action on it tonight, it's more of a thought process. The biggest thing is, we've agreed that we wanna put something in there.
Put a range, but maybe we could take a little time to dig into what that range should be.
I think I would.
Discuss, discuss a range at the next, to come to a conclusion at the next meeting?
Yeah, so we're gonna do a range. It sounds like, oh, for one twenty-five, do you question, is that kind of?
It should be lower on the bottom, because that's six years' experience that Goodhue has, so.
Depending if you get somebody right up, you know. So, we'll put, we'll put it at the holding spot.
Yeah, I think you're.
Just know that it's a range, that we're gonna put a range.
I'll just throw this in, sometimes, you just got this put in front of you, sometimes as you look at it longer, it, it makes a little more sense and you maybe come to a little bit better number. I'm not saying that that's not the right number, but I mean, I, my own thought is it might be worth taking time to look at.
The other thing that we might want to consider, we're, we're looking at our specific area, but we might wanna look at what, what other openings there are, and what their range is of schools that are comparable in size and need. Because if we're going after the same candidates, we wanna make sure that we're competitive with those other openings. It's not just about our specific area, but this, this is a statewide, from what I understand, a statewide search. So, we wanna make sure that we're gonna be competitive with other communities of our size in terms of range. And it might end up being, I mean, maybe it'll, I could tell, but maybe it'll be lower, too. So, that's, that's something we might wanna take into consideration, if there's current postings out there that are similar, that would give us something to work from.
I guess, a thought I had, too, is, you know, going back to the experience question, if you have a principal that's looking to take that next step, how does that fit into your salary range, what they're currently at, that makes it enticing for them to put themselves out there? And so.
At least one of that more situations have come to my mind, where that individual was making the same as the incumbent or more when they took it on as their first superintendent position. So, it was not a lower salary, it was either the same or a higher salary. Not saying that that will be the case, but that has happened.
And the money, to me, always seems so relative, if you're if you're in eighth in Minnesota, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it's just a lot different than a Cannon Falls hundred and twenty-five thousand. You have a high cost of living here, where it puts those numbers relatively different at the same time. Somebody's one forty, and somebody else is one twenty. So, I get a little nervous about going low, I respect what Anna's got to say as well, that, you know, we're in competition for other districts, but at the same time, cost of living means a lot. Give us till the next week.
We have a placeholder. All right, so just a quick review regarding this brochure. We will take the leadership information that we gather tonight, and size that, put that into the profile here. We'll be seeing superintendent experience as preferred, and then on the backside, yes, there'll be some type of range. It will be for the discussion at the next meeting, but the thought process right now is that there will be a range included in the brochure. And this information, then we'll get back to Lori, so that she can get it out to you before the January twenty-eighth board meeting. Questions, comments, concerns about the brochure? And again, if there's anything that you feel really strongly that should be added or deleted, let Lori know, and she can get that information to us before the twenty-eighth, and we can make those changes.
That means everyone, if you've got something for, please contribute.
If you can think of something that, you know, should be considered or included or excluded for some reason, let Lori know, she can contact us. The school district points of pride was developed, I pulled a, a, a number of things off the website, and then I worked with Beth. Beth and I worked together on that and talked about some things, but she was at the leadership conference, and we were calling during breaks, and you know that darn MSBA, they don't give you any breaks. No, but she was very helpful, and, and your website, by the way, just for what it's worth, I really commend your website, whoever develops that, it's a, it's an excellent resource, I found it to be a nice resource, and I got a lot of information off of.
Just one thought I had on the, just under the, the search. I guess the impression that I took from reading it is that Beth served in the capacity of superintendent for fourteen years.
So, we should reword that, is it the fourteen-year superintendent?
I also had one more.
She was, she's been superintendent, Lori, her eight years, and so, just clarification.
That helps to have the reader tell us what they can do, because you're right, that's what it kind of looks like.
And it's minor, but Mr. Hodges, ramp up is, that's six through twelve, right?
It is a six through twelve.
Yeah, so the program in here, it says high school, but it is six through twelve, does the college run this?
Okay, very good.
I wasn't sure if it was six or seven, so I just wanted to make sure. Yep, that's I thought.
And the final bullet point under the points of pride, going back to your comment, speech should be added?
Mm-hmm.
Are there some FFA champions?
I think there might, I think you're correct.
Okay, so speech in FFA.
FFA. So, again, it's a work in progress until Monday.
Draft.
Hopefully, we'll get it finalized on Monday.
All right. All right, so, the rest of this booklet, this viral bound booklet, is kind of things that will be taking place in the future. So, this will be referenced in addition to another book that will be coming. So, we'll talk about making sure that we get the information out as best as we can to cast that wide net for you, the interview process. Something that you'll need to wanna take in consideration, again, doesn't have to be decided tonight, is gonna be, probably discussed more on the twenty-eighth meeting, is if you want to do a non-board member, member interview committee, so if you want to incorporate having non-board members also participate in the interview process, what will that look like? So, that will be something to think about, so that you can discuss it in more detail on the twenty-eighth, and then get things finalized before the first round of interviews actually start. Because if you have non-board members participating, we wanna make sure that they also go through the interview training also, so that everyone's on the same page as the do, do not ask questions and those types of things, okay? And then, we'll work with you to craft interview questions based on your hiring criteria. So, going back to Bill's comment of making sure that we're fleshing out those things that highlight their past experiences and or related experiences regarding the hiring criteria, those areas that you've identified for their first and second round of interviews. And then, reference checking, we'll do some preliminary reference checking, but we always encourage the board to do their own reference checking, and that usually will take place between the first round of interviews and the second round of interviews. And so, you'll need to identify who is going to take care of that. So, again, it doesn't have to be decided today, but start thinking about who that individual might be that will be conducting the reference checks of the two, three, four people that you wanna be rep for second round of interviews. And then, from now until the deadline, we'll take care of getting information out to everyone, letting know about the vacancy, collecting all the information, answering questions that the candidates may have. And if we don't know the answer, we'll probably reach out to Lori and show directives who we need to get in contact with regarding those questions. We'll be monitoring to make sure that people are getting their paperwork in, a lot of times, somebody will initiate, submit, and there's things missing. So, we just wanna make sure that we're following up and saying, do you have all the information in, got the completed file? Can we pass it on then to you, the board for your review, and then the interview process? So, tonight, we did a lot of discussion and not a lot of action taking place. A lot of the action will actually take place at your next meeting, where you'll be taking action to finalize and approve the brochure, and within that brochure then, will be the leadership profile and the salary range. And then, we talked about the stakeholder engagement piece as to when those will take place. Right now, we've kind of saved the week of February eleventh, so working with the staff to figure out what days and time works best to have those meetings. And it's gonna be before school, after school, an evening community engagement piece, a luncheon community engagement piece, trying to figure out what's gonna work best, that we can get the most people involved in that process as possible for you. And then also the one-on-one interviews. So, tonight, you'll need to start thinking about, you mentioned that you wanted to have community one-on-one interviews. So, we're gonna ask that each board member provide us with two names and their contact information on the twenty-eighth. Let them know that you're doing that, actually, I should say, ask them first if they would like to be contacted. And then, if so, someone from MSBA will contact them and do a one-on-one interview with them regarding the search process. So, we're asking each board member to give us two names of community members, and then, on the twenty-eighth, you'll discuss the staff, as Bruce alluded to, the one-on-one, how that's gonna take place. But it's a little bit easier to get in contact with staff, because we know where you're at regarding the community, it's a little bit harder, we don't have their contact information. So, that's why we're asking you to start thinking now ahead of time, who it is you'd like us to contact, and then provide that information to us.
And that would take place on?
That would take place the week of the February eleventh, and if they're not available, we can do phone interviews, if they don't wanna do it in person. Again, we're pretty flexible with trying to look at people's schedules.
And these are the questions that you gave us, that you'll be asking, or are there?
Okay, yeah, we try to be consistent.
Nope, it's just good to know. Is it okay for us to give that to the people ahead of time, or do you, would you rather?
You can if you want to.
It's not necessary.
You don't, it's not necessary, you don't have to.
We can if we want to, okay.
If you have somebody.
Like if somebody is wondering, or wondering, well, what are they gonna ask them, they can be a little more prepared.
And then, another thing to think about is what role you'd like your current superintendent Beth to take throughout the process. So, that's something that you'll wanna think about, and then, the twenty-eighth, kind of decide as to what role, if any, that you'd like to have her in throughout the interview process, or the search process, I should say. And it's not all over the board, so that's a local decision for you to decide, okay? So, tonight, the one action item that I will need from you is to approve the survey, so that we then can get a link to Lori to get on your website, then we can get information to your newspaper and the radio, so that we can get information out to the public, let them know that the survey is live.
Do we need to add it to the agenda?
Okay.
That's right, that's right. For a small-town board here, we'll figure this out.
Need a motion to add the approval of the superintendent search survey to the agenda?
Need that motion.
Make a motion.
A second.
Motion and a second by Katie. Other discussion, all in favor of adding the superintendent search survey to our agenda, say aye. Opposed, carries. Now, we're looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent search survey.
Okay, motion by Katie. Second. Second? Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, carry.
But then as I alluded to, next week is your big week. You have a lot of things. So we will get that brochure updated and everything to you. And then you'll finalize your community engagement pieces, the dates and times for those. And those will take place. And again, then we can work with Lori to get that information out to everyone so that they know when they can come and provide that feedback to everyone. And then brochure, which includes everything, and then stakeholder involvement. And then non-board member interview, if you're looking to do one of those things.
So will you carry, carry the ball for us throughout the whole process, or will your, your people change for us, Bruce?
Uh, there'll be one more person, Dave Thompson, who's superintendent. Uh, because once the actual interview phase hits, I'll be gone. But Dave has actually been through that, so, and they don't necessarily tie together. So I'll be, I'll be through it, the whole thing in terms of now the information you gave us tonight and when we screen applicants. And then I'll, they'll need to bow out because I'm gone. But that's at the point where it turns into interview. And I'll just share my information with Dave. It should, that, I don't think you'll see a bump at all, so.
Long-term Stewie suit.
Yes, right, yeah. Experienced and, and with, with Stuartville for too many years.
And then Sandy and I from the MSBA staff will, with the two individuals, one or other of the others will be working with you.
So at our next regularly scheduled board meeting, this will be one of our agenda topics and we're going to have a light, a light other agenda. This will fit us pretty well, I think. Anything else for us this evening?
I'm just excited to work with all of you and get things rolling and.
Any other comments from, from our folks, from our supporters here? Team, do you have anything to add? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Bill, second?
Second.
Second by Anna. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are finished. Thank you for coming. Thanks, everyone.
I would just thank all of you for the input you gave us tonight. That's going to be very helpful. I appreciate your time and being here and we'll be talking more.